I didn't hear any comments or corrections to the minutes, so we will follow them, hearing that there were none.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 21st, 2023 City of Pankit Planning Board Meeting. If anyone in the audience plans to speak, make sure that you sign the ledger in the back. And Commissioners, I would like to remind you to speak into the mic and say your name before you speak for the recorder. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Make sure that we have a quorum, if we can have roll call.
Susan Lopez.
Here.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Chip Roarke. Arthur Lacks.
Here.
Jose Arturo Brajas.
Here.
Beverly Hood.
Here.
Barry McCracken had an illness in the family, won't be able to join us tonight. Uh, Dave Robinson said he had a conflict early and was hoping to make it a little bit later in the meeting, so, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. A panel of minutes for February 14, 2023. Are there any questions? Or any comments or corrections to the minutes?
A comment. Um, I, I think that this, this set of minutes, um, built something that I think is a responsibility that we have, which is to bring good content for review as a council. And I think, I think this one was a good example.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Roarke. Communications mic.
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear any comments or corrections to the minutes, so we will follow them, hearing that there were none.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, regarding communications, uh, there have been several that have come in this afternoon regarding, uh, one of the cases on the agenda. We'll just cover those when we get to that item.
City Council, City Council actions?
Uh, yes, we have one. Um, we approved, the Planning Board recommended approval of the solar system, HODA, KCC, and the City Council agreed with your recommendation, and that was approved on February 21st. Um, they are moving quickly ahead with plans and submissions, and so I do expect that one to get built, uh, this summer.
Okay, we will go to unfinished business. Regarding case number PB 2022-1-1-2, we will continue the public hearing to next month. So I would need a motion to move that meeting to next month.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Susan Lopez. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Chip Roarke.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Brajas.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
All right, that's continued.
Case number PB 2023-1-1, we're continuing the public hearing on a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operations of a used car dealership at 790-794 North Fifth Avenue in Pankit Key, Zone C2, and the applicant is Saban Fizaki. Will the applicant for this case please come forward and provide an update?
Hello, my name is Sadia Faza, and this is my dad, Saban Fizowski. Um, we have been looking at the proposals that you guys had. Um, I had a set from Mike a couple of days ago, and we love everything that's on there that is proposed. Uh, we did look at the lot as well as the additional paving that might need to occur. Uh, we did look at the lots, and it does look like it does add a lot more, um, space per car, so that's good. Um, one thing that we had a few questions about was specifically for the cost of the lot that will be, as well as, um, the paving timeframe. So, like we said, like we're trying to open this business in order to, you know, increase profit and increase revenue for that place. Um, we want to make sure that we are given a proper timeframe in order to achieve that paving, as well as, um, just any additional time that we would need for that. So again, this is all upon whether you guys approve it or not. Do you have any additional questions or any new questions that you had?
So I guess, just for background, in case anybody in the audience is, is interested in how this is, is working. Uh, you applied for a, uh, to operate a used car lot at 790. The, the city owns the lot to the north of you.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, I think would probably make sense to incorporate that lot into your business. So when we published for the public hearing, we, uh, published for both lots. Um, I would say in terms of timing, uh, there's no reason why you couldn't begin your business on the lot that you currently own while we're still working on negotiations and transfer of property and all those kind of things on the northern lot. So I think that's fine. Um, this really isn't the right forum to talk about the price of the property, so we'll, we'll work on that.
I think that was something that we have to do here, or?
No, no, we'll work with you individually on that.
Okay.
Um, and in terms of the timing of paving that lot, I, I think that the Planning Board would like to provide some suggestions. I think that would be fine. Um, I think giving you some reasonable amount of time to do that makes sense. What that is exactly, I don't know, but I think, yes, it wouldn't be needed initially for you to start operation.
Commissioners, you have any comments or questions?
Um, Deb Terrell, I have a comment and a question. Uh, the removal of the pavement on the berm between the sidewalk and the street, I think that's pretty much essential for this.
On Cleveland, yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, I don't like either of them. Um, that's, is that part of your property?
Well, the, the, the area along Cleveland is, is city property, um, but I think.
On Fifth, it's not city property?
Well, no, no, they're both city property, okay? Both, both, everything, uh, well, the yellow line on, on the air photograph, right, is the property line essentially, so everything outside of that is city property. Um, you know, I think the third degree work on the property would make sense for them to be the ones removing that asphalt along Cleveland. I didn't show it on my plan, removing it along Fifth. The reason I didn't is if you look just across the street, there's all kinds of areas that are also paved that way. Um, I, I'm not a fan of pavement in those right of ways either, but it exists.
It's not just a matter of aesthetics, it's a matter of permeable surface for stormwater runoff and, and, you know, to absorb some chemicals from the lot, things like that, before they go into the storm sewer. So I, I would like to see all of the pavement that's on city-owned property removed. Um, my question is, do we have an estimated time that the demolition is actually going to be finished? Because it looks like it's probably somewhere in the middle right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have an exact timeframe on that, but I know it's a process.
Because it would be hard for us to set a date by which they had to pave it if we don't know when it's going to be completed for them to pay.
Right, well, I think, I think whatever date you, you could do something like within six months, or nine months, or even a year after the close of the sale of the property. We're not going to sell it to them until we get that removed and everything else, so I think basing it on that point would probably be logical.
All right.
Uh, my question, Chip Roarke. Um, it looks as though on Cleveland, there aren't sidewalks.
That's correct.
It's, you know, it's, there is on, on Williams, uh, but there are no sidewalks on, uh, change.
Uh, well, what I was suggesting was just removing the asphalt and going back to turf, uh, along there. I wasn't suggesting actually adding a sidewalk. I, I don't know if it's essential in that location.
Well, it wasn't there.
It wasn't there before, right.
Are the, are the, uh, park, are there four parking places that are going against the building? So we would have pavement there, right?
Yeah, I mean, they've, they've got garage doors on the back end of that building, right? So those are really kind of spaces in front of the garage doors, is essentially what that was showing.
Then last, a question on, uh, if, if the, uh, the lot that, that is, you know, scheduled to be sold to them, it's the city lot, and it has 10% of the parking places for cars on that lot. Is, is, do we have to be concerned about the fact that the lot may not be paved by the time that those cars are sitting on it? Or is it be conditional upon the occupancy of the cars and the pavement being placed?
Um.
May I interrupt?
Absolutely.
I think it's be, um, due to the fact that we are still able to have a dealership with, it's, I think the minimum is 12 cars on a lot. Um, because we're able to have 14, I don't think that would be an immediate issue. Um, over time, it'll just maybe be able to put the cars on it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the condition really should be, um, not to have any cars displayed on that northern lot until it's paved. Yeah.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Uh, yeah, Deb Terrell. Um, it's kind of hard to see on here because the little, I'm assuming that the little, uh, dark gray squares are where you're going to have cars parked. Is that correct?
Well, they're blue on the one that I'm looking at, but.
I want to pull up the illustration on the screen, actually, that might be helpful. Okay, so the little blue boxes are where I was suggesting cars could park, and it really, I should probably speak to Mike.
What I was really trying to do here was just kind of come up with a number, because we've got some lots in town where people just park way too many cars. So I wanted to see how many would fit on the site. Do they have to park them exactly where I showed? No, I don't think so. But that, I was just trying to find a cap on the number of spaces that would fit on the property.
I guess what I'm concerned with is that they maintain ingress and egress to the lot by customers. Because if, if they don't have a clear path to enter on either Fifth or Cleveland, or exit on Fifth or Cleveland, they're going to be backing out into traffic. So the curb cuts.
Yeah, so.
I think we would leave a, like, path, yep, from there to the other side. And then you wouldn't necessarily have to have a car on that side over there. You could, like, make it where they could go from either side, if that's your concern. So I think depending on how you position them, I think you're able to have at least one where it goes out somewhere.
This could be spot or something, make that clear.
I'm so.
And also, what are the bays going to be used for?
The what?
The bays.
For leading cars?
Oh, yeah.
For detailing?
Yeah.
You're not going to be working on cars?
No, not major things, maybe, just, uh, maybe if something, you know, like small breaks or something, but, but not like a moral transmission, it's not like a justice.
I guess what I'm saying is you're only going to be working on the cars that you're selling. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's not going to be anything else, or doing like additional work on our cars now.
Okay. Thank you.
That seems like an easy way to frame it.
Yeah.
And you, you said you were going to be doing detailing?
Yes.
Yeah, on the cars that we have, yeah.
Arturo Bra.
I mean, like, if you, of course, if you get a car that's, you know, that needs additional stuff on it.
I have a question. Do you own, uh, other dealerships, or this is your first one? Seems like.
No, we don't.
We have, like, additional properties where we're able to open car dealerships and, um, and loan test businesses. However, we just wanted to make sure that we're able to go ahead with this one, because obviously we want to develop the area limited. So, you know, we're more concerned about this space as opposed to.
It's closer than we want to be here, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against this case? You may come forward at this time. Seeing that there are none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing session. And I'll bring it back to the Commissioners one more time and see if you have any questions or comments.
Chip Roarke, I have another question on lighting. That, that could be done in a variety of ways. Uh, Mike, is there a, a thought on containing the light? Just how it shines down on the property, but not out from the property?
Absolutely, we can, um, address that. So for the northern lot, they're going to have to submit the site plan shows in paving and landscaping, and we could address lighting at the same time. For the southern lot, I honestly didn't check. Do you know what the lighting is like on that property now? Are there the lights on the building or anything on the parking area?
There's lights on, I think there's two, and there's one.
It's got two in the ground, each side, only one, the ones that are turned down, out, the back, only one light's on there. That one, the board, it's not able to open the side, like, we just have that on. But my concern is. Actually, you, you want to light up the products that you sell. You want to have a light on your cars. But, but, you know, there, there's, there's an opportunity by careful placement of light to have it not shine into the house, houses and streets. Shine out from your property, have it drop in your property. Probably designed that, that. Yeah, those are buildings that they do, so, they are.
Yeah, and that's what we'd like to see, and there hasn't really been, I don't feel like it's been doing that on the property. So I don't think we would fix any, we would add anything additional to the, towards the cars just on the building.
So the new, the new lights that would be required on the north side of the products that you're selling, parts that you're selling.
Yeah.
That's something that, and be done, and something that will be speculated when the site plan comes.
But, you know, it could be ours, maybe.
And they have to be moved, you know, and now we can adjust them, because, well, they're just. If you keep the light, the light on your property, then you're going to have to need everybody else to, 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 by that, by that.
Okay, Commissioners, are we ready to add?
Um, I have a, a sort of a, um, semantics question here, if you will. The recommendation from the Planning Office is for recommend, uh, of approving this, subject to the following conditions. The applicant agrees to pursue purchase of the parcel that's owned by the city. But then it says, if the parcel is acquired by the applicant, they shall blah, blah, blah. Which is it? Are we requiring them to purchase that city lot, or are we just saying, think about it, or what?
Well, because we have not negotiated a price and gotten to that, it's a little hard for me to say that they have to buy it, uh, because they may not agree with the price that the city wants to sell it to them at. I would like them to purchase it. They want to purchase it. It makes a lot of sense for them to purchase it. But I was a little hesitant to say they have to purchase it. So that's why I worded it the way I did it.
And we're aware of, like, the comps in the neighborhood, as well as, like, the ones that have been sold, as well as not sold. So, like, I feel like we have a reasonable, like, place of where we want to accept an offer, as well as, like, the city is able to understand, like, where they've been in the past with those. I feel like you will also make a reasonable offer to negotiate. So, you know, we're fully on board with wanting to purchase that, because, again, it's an empty lot. Like, I almost feel like what else would agree to purchase that place besides the person right in front of it?
That's actually been.
Wouldn't make sense for a residential person over on the other side to take it. So it just makes sense for us to take it on that side, of course, with demolition.
Yeah, I can tell you that it, that's exactly the view that, that staff had, and talking to the mayor, he felt the same way. It's just makes sense to use this whole triangle for what it is, so.
Okay.
And the staff notes read, assuming that the CUP is granted, the city is interested in selling the parcel.
Yes, they absolutely are.
Okay.
Um, I might add that, based on the conversation, I would suggest supplementing our, uh, recommended approval to add, like, a 2D, um, that would be referring to the, the city-owned lot right now, to say that, uh, paving will be required prior to placing cars for sale on that property, I think makes sense. And then you probably should add a, a number five, at least I would suggest, you add a number five condition that says, any repair or detailing work, uh, should be done inside the building, and only for vehicles to be sold on site. We said that, but just to be clear.
With those recommended changes, are we ready to?
Um, I am. Case PB 2023-1-1, the request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a used car dealership at 790 and 794 North Fifth Avenue, Zone C2. Um, I would like to move that we, uh, recommend approval to City Council. And would like to attach the findings from the Planning Department, and also the recommendations, which are as follows. Uh, the applicant agrees to pursue purchase of parcel 160932107002. If parcel 160932107002 is acquired by the applicant, they shall submit plans for paving and landscape improvements through the city's site plan review process. B, they improve the subject property by paving the parcel and installing appropriate landscape. C, have a maximum of 14 cars parked on that parcel. And D, uh, that they pave the lot before any cars are displayed there for sale. Uh, number three, at least three designated onsite parking spaces should be provided for customers and employees. And four, uh, regarding the parcel that you own, 16093210703, the property owner shall have a minimum of thirteen, oh, sorry, maximum of 13 cars for sale, plus at least three designated onsite parking spaces for customer and employee parking. B, remove the parkway pavement along North Cleveland Avenue and provide a grass parkway, as illustrated on the attached concept sketch. And C, any repairs or detailing done with automobiles must be done inside.
Do we have a second?
Can we add something to, um, to a, uh, it talks about paving and landscape. Can we add lighting to that in terms of the review?
What do we want to say about lighting? Is there anything specific?
That, that the property will be lit, light will stop shining beyond the property line.
I guess I'm okay with wording it as lighting will be provided with every attempt to shade the lighting at the property line. I don't know if we can say that no lighting should be apparent to any of the houses.
There are, there are some zoning ordinances in different places, and I think we're starting to move toward this, where we talk about having the light level of the, at the property line go down to one foot candle. That's moonlight.
Is that a requirement that we have for other businesses?
Uh, yeah, I've never heard of it.
I'd be more comfortable if we put that requirement in our code before I put it on one party.
I will, I will, as long as I'm around, I will guarantee that staff will make sure that we do the best we can to make sure that it's not shining in anybody's house.
By the windows, and that's the thing. And I, I know we've talked about one foot candle here in this room, but I don't know what the status of that.
It's a great idea, and I'm all for it. I just don't want to place that burden on one applicant.
I understand.
Yeah.
My second.
So we have a motion by Deb Terrell, and a second by Jose Arturo Brajas. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Brajas.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Chip Roarke.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
All right, this will be recommended to the City Council for approval.
Thank you very much, Ray, I appreciate it.
Good luck to you.
New business PB, PB 2023-1-3, a request for a major variance from the single-family residential shed setback requirements for 1147 South Elm Avenue, Zone R1, the applicant Dan Howell. Will the applicant for this case, oh, he's already here, thank you.
Um, Dan, I need to have you swear in, right? So do you swear to tell the truth, full truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Tell us about your request.
Yeah, um, so we purchased the home on Elm about a year and a half ago, um, and moved in, and it had a 30-year-old metal rusted garden shed. Um, it was an eyesore, to be honest, and, and dangerous. And so we took it down, kept the foundation and the flooring, and stick-built a new shed, windows and a door, same footprint, same place. Fortunately, I assume, because we were just rebuilding on the same foundation, that was all grandfathered and good, until Code came by and told me that the setback is supposed to be five feet on the property line, which my shed obviously isn't. So we've built this shed, it's the same height, it's the same length, it's the same dimensions as the previous shed, it's just a nice shed now. And we have the support of our neighbors to the north, Pam Gonzalez, who, that's the property lining that it's close to. So I'm just hoping that I could get approval for the variance, so that we can keep our shed as we try to beautify our property.
Commissioner, any questions?
I have a question on, on permitting. One of the problems that we have that, that will permit both of us.
Correct.
So that would, you would go to a tip.
Yes, yes, I live and learn, and now know. My false assumption was like-for-like, and, and we were keeping the foundation, and I thought I could replace like-for-like. There you go. You can see the eyesore that it used to be, and the shed that my wife calls her she-shed for gardening.
I was going to say, it looks like a she-shed to me.
Yes, yes.
Arthur Lacks, are both sheds the same dimensions?
Yes, um, they're the same height, they're the same length. The new shed is about six inches narrower, but it's on the same foundation.
Um, Deb Terrell, when I read the application, my first concern was that it might be uh, in a position where it would prevent emergency vehicles, like the fire department, from accessing the house or a neighbor's property. So I drove over and took a look at it, and. So I drove over and took a look at it, and it looks to me like there's still plenty of room to access your property or your neighbors by any first responders. Also, since it's stick-built on a concrete pad, it would not be easy for you to move it.
That's why I'm here. At your mercy.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience for or against this case if you'd like to come forward, please? Seeing that there are none, the public session, the hearing session is closed. Commissioners, any other questions or comments before we end?
Arturo Barajas, it's a beautiful shed, so, you know, good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
It's definitely an improvement over what was there.
It's my wife says.
Are we ready to end?
Yes. Regarding case PB 2023-1-3, a request for a major variance from the single-family residential shed setback requirements for 1147 South Elm Avenue, Zone R1, by Dan Howell. I've, I move that we accept the building in its location, that there's no resistance to the, to the shed location by the neighbors. And as Ms. Terrell pointed out, the fire department can still get to the house for fire purposes, for putting out a fire, that's the most important thing, I think, that our side yard setback are for. I would like to also, on this variance, include the standards that, that staff has put together for variances, and it seems to meet the standards. It relates to a specific parcel of land and is due to some unique circumstances, that is true. Property in question, can I yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions of other regulations of that zone? It's gonna be hard to move. Variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not alter the essential character of the area. Discuss that as being true. The benefits of the variance would substantially outweigh the detriment. Again, I move it to the variance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Chip Warham and a second by Arthur Lacks. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Chip Warham.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Your variance is granted.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Case PB 2023-2-1, a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a phlebotomy vocational school at 242 West Jeffrey Street, Zone C2, by Corticia Jones of Jay's Medical Services.
Corticia, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Tell us about your request.
Hi, my name is Corticia Jones, the owner of Jay's Medical Services. I wanted to break a phlebotomy school here to our community. I think it would be great for everybody, especially like for students that's looking to go into the nursing field. It'd be great, a great start for them because that's teaching them how to, you know, start their IVs, draw their blood. Education-wise, it's bringing more education as well. That's just what I'm trying to do.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, Deb Terrell. Are you planning to be in the space right next to the bodega in the same building? The store?
Um, Three Brothers?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right next door, yes.
Okay, 'cause this address is for the tire shop. So I was confused by where exactly you were gonna be. That being the case-
Well, wait, let me make sure I understand right. I, I thought it was gonna be in the building where the tire shop is, and that's not correct?
It's right next to-
Right next to it.
It has the same address, it says 244.
It's not the same address. The tire shop is 242, and the other building on the door of the space where you're going to be, it says 244.
Right.
Some corrections?
Yeah.
The landlord is here, if you're gonna ask her, she can tell you more about the address than I can.
Okay.
No, I think particularly landlord. Have you, state your name.
Alma Vazquez.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I have an answer for your question. So it is 244 technically where she could be residing. It's still under the same parcel and same lot number, though. It's 242, 244, 249, I have it still combined all in the same lot, same parcel.
It's all one parcel number?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we're fine.
Well, the, the main reason I'm asking is because when I pulled in to look at the space, there were four cars parked in front of the bodega and the, the store. And maybe I should stop, is, is that an unfamiliar term here, bodega?
It's a grocery store.
So-
It's like a mini mart.
Yeah. I pulled in there, and there were four cars parked in front of there, and there was no place for me to park. And if I had parked off to the east, I would have been in the driveway of the tire shop. So the parking there is extremely limited. So I'm asking because I, I don't know how many students you plan to have there at any given time, but I don't know where they're gonna park.
So from my understanding, me and the store owner, he has like four spaces, he has this to the right, and then to the left, I would have three spaces. I was also told by the owner that I'm able to park in the back and also across the street if needed. But the student instructor ratio is only one to 10, but there's not a guarantee that I'll have 10 students at one time.
There's tiny room in the back, so there's an entrance through the back, there's an exit and an entrance to the rear side, and there's enough space for at least six cars in the back.
Okay, all right. I don't see any possibility to park further east than the four spaces in front of the store because that is the driveway going into the tire shop.
I mean, there is-
Plus, it's so filled with junk, I don't know how anybody would park there. That place is a mess.
So right before the garbage can, it would only be the three spaces that I would use because the owner next door, his parking starts at his window. So I would have the three spaces, and he would have the four to the right of me. So I would only utilize, utilize those three spaces, and then I have to park it in the back of the building.
Okay. So that's about how many students you'd be expecting at any given time, 10?
Yes, the maximum.
Okay.
But it's not guaranteed.
Okay. And what time of day will your classes be taking place?
I'm looking to do morning classes and evening classes to work with people's schedules. So my earliest class will start like at nine o'clock and only last for like three hours, so that's nine to twelve, maybe one, 'cause you do have a break. My latest would not run late because I know it gets dark. So I haven't really figured out a time yet, but I'm thinking of like three to seven or something like that.
Okay.
For night classes.
Do we have a site cleared?
Not really, no. It's just reusing the existing building that you can see. So it's actually, this is the whole thing we were talking about, and here's the part that she was talking about in the back, and it is a decent number of spaces.
That's the back?
Yeah. Arturo Barajas, I have a question. Your classes are gonna be all year round or only in the school?
No, it's gonna be all year round.
Thank you.
Do we get answers to all those questions?
Um, okay, so the property owner was here, and she's testified that she's, she's willing, she's, she wants this business in, in her facility, so that's fine. Are you the primary instructor, or will there be other instructors?
Yes, I'm the primary for right now, but I am looking to get other instructors in there to help.
Okay. And you emailed me this, but there's, you have a certification in this, so I'm sorry. I don't need to see it, I just wanted to know if you got it. I, I trust you. Are these types of facilities licensed by the state of Illinois? I just don't know.
Yeah, they are. I had to get my EIM. I have to wait to get my business license if that's what you want.
Right.
To do anything else.
Got it.
So there will be state oversight?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you're gonna have to have insurance to get your business license anyway, so the question five's kinda moved, so don't worry about that. This is another kind of question, but is there any kind of equipment or anything involved? I, probably not much, right?
Um, nothing major because it's not a lab, so the only thing I have is the phlebotomy chair and then the centrifuge machine, and that's just spinning the blood down before I take it to the lab.
That begs one question. I'm not sure why some of these questions are on here. I don't know why the requirements for acceptance into the program or any of our business, but-
Curiosity.
The, the one thing that I'm concerned about, other than is this a good fit for this space, is public safety, of course, always. What about the disposal of blood products and needles? Do you have some protocol for that?
Um, I haven't gotten to all of that yet, but I do have the sharps containers that the needles will go in, I do have the biohazard bag. I just haven't partnered with anybody yet for them to come and pick up things because I was waiting for this whole-
But you do have a protocol for that?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have a question on the, have you looked into what improvements you have to make to the building, the building department?
Um, Code came out, the fire, the fire department came out, they passed me. When the fire department first came out, I, all I had to get was the smoke detectors put in. I had to get six, I believe, we did that. They had us take down an extension cord, we did that, so everything that they asked of us, the landlord had to account for.
Does the building department get through? I'm glad, I'm glad that the fire department's coming. But, you know, there's things about egress, coming bathrooms, doors swaying, fighting, and stuff like that that you're gonna have to comply with.
Just Code and the fire department.
Probably just the fire department. The building code, people came?
The building was just coming.
They did?
Yeah.
All right, and I'm saying that partially just so that you don't get-
Right, right. Yeah, they came and they looked at everything, that's why, when, one time they came, she wasn't there, but she was there when the fires started to came, but when Code came, I just don't know what they said, and it doesn't- And then I did reach out to the health department, and they said they didn't have any bills with this type of stuff, they didn't need to get involved.
So you'll have to get a permit? And, and then do the work that is on permit, and you get a certificate of evidence, which will apply again?
Okay.
All that stuff is part of it?
Arthur Lacks, do you have any requirements? We talked about, you talked about a little bit with the red bags and the sharps container with OSHA?
Yes. Um, I've been doing applications with OSHA. I can't remember any of those, but I'm still basically going through the process, but everything is on hold right now because I didn't wanna overstep my boundaries with everything until I figured out where, you know, this needle was gonna go. So like, that's why my insurance is on hold, like, I have, people had emailed me, you know, the cost of the insurance that I didn't get yet, because I didn't wanna get it if I couldn't start school, that would not make any sense to me.
Any long-term plans?
Um, I don't wanna just stop here at this building, I wanna keep it if she's allowed to, and I wanna just add one, so I do wanna look into opening up another one, expand.
Do you know, are there any other facilities providing this kind of training in Kankakee County?
The only other facility is of Kankakee Community College.
The nursing program?
Um, it's not really the nursing program.
Of a phlebotomy?
Yes, the phlebotomy.
Oh, it is a phlebotomy program?
Yes.
I guess just since we're approving a conditional use for this type of school, would there be any other type of medical training or anything else you might be doing in the future, or are you just gonna stick with phlebotomy?
No, I'm gonna get trained in CPR as well, but as far as like CNA or anything, I'm not gonna do that. Because you have to be a RBN to be able to teach CNA.
Okay. We did receive several emails from, I assume, residents that I can read into the record, but some of them may be here, so maybe open it up, but then we cover these at the end.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up for the public hearing session. Is there anyone in the audience for or against this case if you'd like to come forward?
I'm for, she should open up her business, she was one of our students at the junior high, she's probably been to her, and she's always had a great interest in the medical field, so I'm, I'm pushing for her to be able to open this facility. I think it's great, any kind of, they opened up the barber shop, Philip Phillips Barber Shop over, and the kids are in there, man, it's packed. I'm wishing the same thing for her, for her. You know, man, just give these kids an opportunity to get an education, to learn some skills, man, it's a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Akisha Marrow. I am for her opening up this business, business as a medical professional myself. I am totally interested in furthering my education as far as going into phlebotomy so that I could, it's one step closer to the actual nursing degree for me. So I think it's really a good idea that when she does do it, that, that she'll open up the doors for other young ladies, other men, to be able to go ahead and pursue a career in phlebotomy, you know, the healthcare career field is really shaky right now because we're overworked, and we need new faces, we need new people, we need new eyes, new ears in this field, so I think it's a great idea. I, I pray that you guys welcome it, and I wish her the best.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Latrice Carroll, I am Corticia's mom. I was trying to figure out what I was gonna say, I'm emotional. I want this for Corticia. She's a single mom, just as I was, raising my three kids, and she has three boys. This is her dream. Just as many other people had dreams, they had goals, they had visions. I'm asking y'all, don't snitch on me. Give her the opportunity to reach people in this community. It's, she's not selfish, so it's not about her. I want the best for her, I want her to go further than what I ever did in my life. And that's all I wanna say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to add, it's a great benefit as well for all the students that are graduating from the high school that are also interested in the nursing field. It would be a great opportunity for them as well.
You can save your name when we're- You can save your name when we're done.
Alma Vasquez?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alman Marzak from the 4th Ward, not sure how I can follow that, but, you know, I think the location, you know, with, to your, to your point on parking, you know, it's limited, but they do own that lot across the street, which I think, you know, houses quite a few cars, but, you know, outside of, you know, just complying with the city, county and state requirements as far as, you know, operating a facility like that, I haven't heard any negative or anybody against it, so I, I'd welcome, you know, them to the 4th Ward, and now we'll get accused of sucking blood out of our 4th Ward residents. Okay, so we did get several emails today.
One was from Latrice Carroll, but she's already spoken, so I don't think I need to read that one. We have another one from Owasha Williams, I believe it is. Good afternoon, I'm writing to you on behalf of Corticia Jones, I have known her for many years, I am disabled, my mobility's not very good, and I receive iron infusions and lab work services quite often. There's a strong need for a phlebotomy school within the Kankakee area, I would be the first one to volunteer for the students to practice on. People are severely, are very proud of Ms. Jones in making this effort to make it happen. She's considered a hero and an awesome role model within our community, this will represent a sense of pride and motivation for anyone to believe that if you work hard enough, your dreams can come true. I am from the area and personally surveyed and personally received the notice, and there is plenty of parking in the area. If this is still an issue, we, the community, can 100% get signatures from the surrounding neighbors to offer their home front parking spaces to support this matter. Okay, so definitely supportive. We have another one from Sharina West. Hello, I'm sending this email on behalf of Corticia Jones, it's my understanding that she is trying to open a phlebotomy school. A school like this can benefit the community in so many ways, this will be an opportunity to get individuals in a training that can help them secure a job in the medical field. It can also give single parents the opportunity to be financially stable for their kids and so on. The school will benefit Kankakee in a positive way because it will show that there, that we are a community that cares for one another. Thank you for reading this email, have a wonderful day. And Olivia Kennedy sent a note that says, I'm writing you to say that I believe that having a phlebotomy school would be a great asset for this community because it will give another job opportunity. The school might offer at different times than KCC might and, might offer. This community is, this community is used to the basics and going to a phlebotomy school, unlike KCC would be a great and different for the community. We need different opportunities and I am down for anybody opening their own business and doing something out of their family, for their family. There's nothing wrong with having more than one of the same opportunity, there are multiple flower shops, CNA shops, truck schools, et cetera. So having a person with their own phlebotomy school is a beautiful thing to me. Corticia is setting her own plans and future goals. So there you go. You have a fan club.
Anyone else in the audience want to speak at this time? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I have a question for Ms. Vasquez. Did you say that you own the parking lot across the street?
That's correct.
Do you own that whole building?
No. I was interested at one point, but Mayor, previous mayor?
Curtis?
Yes.
No.
She had mentioned that they were trying to...
Oh, previous.
Demolish the building and she said it's not worth buying it, so I left it there.
I wish you owned it. So you just own the parking lot, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But I was interested in the building at one point after...
And you will allow her to have people park there for her school?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, are we ready to act? Case PB 2022-21, the request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a phlebotomy vocational training school at 244 West Jeffrey Street. I would like to move that we recommend approval to City Council for this request. I don't think I want to attach the findings from the planning office because as I read them here, it describes it as a tire shop and not suitable for the use and so forth. So I'll waive those recommendations and just say that I think we should recommend approval.
Second?
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Arthur Lacks. Are there any questions or comments?
Just for clarification, so no conditions at all, which is fine, I'm just asking.
Pardon me?
No conditions attached to it, just straight approval? It's fine, I'm just, wanted to clarify.
No, no, I didn't see these, I'm sorry. Yes, I would like to attach these conditions, that all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, County Health Department, the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement shall be satisfied prior to the commencement of the business operation, and that the applicant shall obtain a City of Kankakee business license prior to the commencement of business, and that the applicant should provide at least seven onsite parking spaces for staff and students. I'd like to amend that to onsite and offsite, since we might use the lot across the street, and access to additional off-street parking nearby if the, nearby the site if the class size requires it. Do you still second that, Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Chip Roarum?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
It's recommended for approval. It'll go on to the council.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
She needs to know that it still has to go to City Council.
Yeah, just so, just so we're clear, it's not, it's not officially approved yet, it does have to go to City Council, just so you know.
Thank you. God bless you.
Bless you too. If the cameras weren't on.
Next case, PB 2023-2-2, a request for a map amendment to rezone properties along South Washington Avenue between West Charles Street and West Jeffrey Street from commercial zoning to residential zoning.
All right, I'm gonna handle this one from out here. So, year or two ago, we went through the city zoning map and looked at and compared existing use of property to existing zoning of property, and there were quite a few areas around town where there is a difference, right? In this particular area, there are a lot of homes, two units and a couple of apartments, actually, that are all zoned, or almost all zoned, C2 commercial, but actually have homes and have had homes probably forever, I suspect on them, right? What that does is it creates legal non-conforming uses, which would mean that if there's a fire on that property, they can't rebuild that house or that residential structure, they would have to replace it with the commercial structure. At least it's our professional opinion that this is not a good likely area for a lot of additional commercial development. Traffic counts are not that high in this area, you have a pretty substantial stock of homes in this area, and so this is an area that we had previously identified for future rezoning. What spurred this particular application was we got a call from a person that was buying a couple of these properties, and when they were going through the process of lending and verifying things with attorneys and that kind of thing, they ask, can this house be rebuilt? And I had to say, no, under the current zoning, it can't, but we are aware that there's a problem in this area, and so I would be willing to entertain a city-initiated rezoning of this area to bring it more in consistency with the actual use that's out happening in this area. So, what we did was we checked with code and found out which properties had valid rental license and which ones were two units and which ones were single-family homes and which ones were actually multifamily units, and we kinda mapped that out. And so that's what you see on the illustration on the right there, that kind of color coding suggests that where it's yellow, we're suggesting R1, single-family, where it's orange, we're suggesting R2, two-family, because that's the way the structure has been either built originally or reconfigured and permitted as a, as a rental license, and you've got a couple buildings that are actually like four-unit buildings, you see in the brown there, particularly on the east side of Hawkins, or the east side of Washington between Hawkins and Van Meter, that are four-unit properties. There are a few lots in here that are actually commercial, we aren't rezoning any of those that are actually used for commercials, so there's a, there's a restaurant, there's a laundromat, there's a hotel on this stretch, those things, we aren't rezoning anything that's actually used commercial, we're leaving those as commercial lots in this proposal. But we are rezoning anything that's a residential structure to the appropriate residential rezoning. The only exception to that is you'll notice between Charles and Hawkins on the east side of the street, you've got a few situations where you've got some very narrow lots there. One of those actually is a two-unit right now, in our professional opinion, it was too small of a lot for a two-unit, so if something happened to it, I'd rather see it go back to a single-family, so that's why I'm suggesting single-family on that. Otherwise, we were trying to be consistent with the existing use of those properties. The other thing that you'll notice here is that you've got some situations where you've got some, some very small lots and a couple of lots that are off the alley, and honestly, probably shouldn't be that way, but they are. So, look in particular, I wished I had a laser pointer, north of Van Meter on the west side of Washington, there's a little yellow box back there that you see, right? I didn't wanna show that as an R2 lot, because I don't want somebody coming back in there in the future and putting a, a two-unit on that little postage stamp, probably 2,000 square foot lot, so I showed it as R1. There's another situation in this area where there is a commercial structure on a lot like that. We showed it changed to residential, I think the owner might be here, might not be here, I'm not sure, but they, they were concerned about rezoning that small lot, they, I think, prefer to keep it commercial, and I understand that from a use perspective. Either way, for that, for anything to be rebuilt on that lot, you'd have to meet the setbacks and that would be a problem in, in any case, so we showed it as residential, they'd prefer to keep it commercial, you guys can probably talk through how you would like to handle that, and we can certainly take some testimony from the public in that area, but, you know, in general, there are lots of areas around town where we need to clean up our zoning map, and since we had an inquiry in this area, I decided to go ahead and pursue this one. This is another area where one of your fellow planning board members, Barry McCracken, actually, six months ago or so when we talked about this, suggested we start in this area, honestly, so that was another reason why I thought it would be good to, to go ahead and take a look at this area and propose a rezoning. Again, really just trying to make the existing use of property consistent with the zoning. Honestly, to me, the only reason to keep it commercial is if you thought there was a high probability that it would make sense to redevelop all of this commercial at some point in time. From a market perspective, I don't see it, so that's why we've proposed what we proposed, to be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Mike, there was, there was a, a couple of years ago, we had a, someone come in at the two turn, they old Chanel Dairy into residential, and the commercial building now, is that gonna stay commercial? Don Washington. I'm not exactly sure where, you know, how, how close it is, it's down toward the back, it's a sort of a blond brick building, reddish blond brick building, and I'd have to look, I'd have to look at the aerials.
So I'm not sure exactly where that one was, but I can tell you in general, if it was an existing commercial, we left it as commercial.
Okay.
I have a question, Mike, you know, when you said really small, how, what is the dimensions, like a forty foot or?
Right, so, the, in the R1 district, and I think in the C2 commercial district too, minimum lot size really right now is 7,500 square feet, but we've got an exception that it can be as low as 6,000 square feet in existing planted lots, which always are existing planted lots, so the minimum lot size right now in this area would be 6,000 square feet. The lots that I'm talking about are more in the range of 2,000 or 3,000 square feet, they're half the normal size.
Mike, on the, to my right, both those structures, they're train tracks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, that is train tracks, that's correct.
And my question was, at one point in time, was there loading and loading in that area? You may not know that, but...
Somebody that's lived in town longer...
...south, south of Jefferson Street, but that's a long way. Those are the long.
Mike, it looks like the Chanel, old Chanel Dairy was at 1063 and 1065 Washington, South Washington.
1063.
I haven't got it on Google here.
Yeah, it looks like we did not include 1063 in a chain, so we left that commercial.
Okay. So, that said, you still could turn that into multifamily, but you'd have to come back.
You could come back and rezone it, and honestly, we'd probably want a review of that in a little bit more detail if they're converting the building anyway, so, but yes, they certainly could, in fact, this would help bolster the case because surrounding zoning would be residential at that point, so.
Thank you.
Deb Terrell, I just wanna say that I so appreciate the work that you're doing with this. This is so necessary and so long overdue. We've just been kicking this can down the road for way too long, and anything that we do to allow people to buy a home and get a loan for it and get it insured, that's what we're here for, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, the, the big problem really is, in any kind of transaction, if somebody wants to get a loan, even if a home improvement loan, they might have a problem if it's not legally conforming, so.
Okay, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this amendment?
Alman Marzak, 4th Ward, just wanted to say that, you know, I like the proactive approach that, you know, you're taking, and this is, like Deb Terrell said, it's long overdue, and, you know, I mean, it, it's come up on the west side, it's come up on the north side, so, you know, this is a, this is a very good start, it, it don't take anyone's property rights away, you know, so I think it's a good approach, and my only concern, he addressed the other day that the commercial lots were staying commercial and, you know, so I, I haven't heard any resistance to this, so I think that's a good, good approach to take, good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Is there anyone else in the audience?
Did you want to speak?
Hello?
[inaudible]
They're reselling?
No, it's not, they're here, they have questions, and I just waited, because they might need some translation.
Okay, thanks, that's fine.
He was concerned, I believe, for what he's mentioned, he had questions, because he resides on Washington Avenue, between Van Meter and Walnut, right in between.
Okay. What's the question?
He said he was never aware that it was under a C2.
Right.
So, a C2.
Yeah, most people, honestly, on these homes, weren't aware that it was zoned commercial.
And the plan is, sorry?
The, the plan is to rezone it to residential, which is what it currently is used for, that will make it much easier for him if he ever wants to sell the property, if he ever wants to improve the property, it'll be a permitted use, and so if you want to, if you want to refinance his home or anything else, it's gonna be much easier if it's correctly zoned. Yes, that's what we're trying to do. Can, can we get his name for the record?
Jose Everardo Gomez.
Thank you. I, I would say the only downside of this would be if he somehow envisioned converting the house to a business, that might be a problem.
That's fine, it's nothing he's looking forward to.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did want to point out, so the one property that I was mentioning that is a garage, and I have it, it's on page 41 of your, your report, if you want to look at it, right, but it's 1085 South Washington, and you can see the, the garage structure that's on that property. As I mentioned, they really couldn't rebuild it where it is now, because they couldn't meet the setback requirements, but, and if we rezone it to residential, they can still continue to use it as a garage, as a grandfathered use. The only downside is that they couldn't try to rebuild the commercial structure on that property if it got destroyed by more than 60%, so.
Is that an attachment to that same building behind it?
No, it's not attached, it's a separate structure.
But it is, it's not resident?
The, the property in, fronting it on Washington is a residential property, but this small lot in back where you see this picture is a separate commercial structure.
Was there any other communication?
We had a couple of phone calls, and we played phone tag with a couple of people, but we didn't actually connect with them, so, no, that was the only other communication on this application.
Hearing session is closed.
Mike, I have a question for, I don't know why, but, like, if somebody would be interested in keeping their lot as a commercial, would that be approval, or, I mean, I don't have a property there or anything, but, it's just a question.
Right, and, and my philosophy on this was if somebody came forward and they said they wanted to keep it commercial, I probably would have suggested you take it out of the, the request, but nobody has, except for this one gentleman. So, if we do this and we rezone these properties, it will be rezoned residential, and they can't use them for commercial unless they come back and ask for a rezoning to commercial.
No, I agree, and I understand, thank you.
Okay.
Any other issues, are we ready to act?
I just have a question on how, how, this is somewhat unique, neat, how do we, how do we act? I mean, what, what do we?
Well, you're right, so there are multiple ways you could actually handle this, right? If you wanted to change any of the suggested zoning on lots, you could include that in your motion. If you're comfortable just the way it is proposed, then you would just act en masse on all of them to, to recommend approval. If you want to pull any of these particular pens out, we could do that as well.
So it's basically a map amendment?
That's exactly what this is.
This called what?
Map amendment.
I thought you said element.
Are there findings attached here for a map amendment?
There are.
Okay. You've got it, Jim.
In the case of PB 2022-12-2, the request for a map amendment to rezone properties along South Washington Avenue between West Charles Street and West Jeffrey Street from commercial zoning to residential zoning, recommend taking action on this. Approval on it?
I would, I would phrase it something along the lines of, recommend approval of the proposed rezoning of properties between West Charles and West Jeffrey Street.
Right. We're recommending that to the City Council.
Correct.
With the standards, the standards used, like that included, should I read those in? Including the standards used to evaluate the map.
As outlined in the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and agree with the recommendation from F that we-
Hold on a second.
We have a motion by Chip Rarm and a second by Jose Arturo Brajas. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Chip Rarm.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Brajas.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
All right, that's recommended for approval.
Other business?
Couple things that are going on. I'm gonna meet with the ordinance committee of the City Council next Tuesday to discuss some of the changes I've already discussed generally with you in terms of our R1 and creating a new residential category, so that we don't have so many lots that are non-conforming in terms of setback and lot area and that kind of stuff. So I want to keep them informed and let them know what we're proposing to make sure they're okay with it before we proceed with the public hearing. If they're good with it, we'll probably proceed with the public hearing next month on some of those changes, so that's going on. Another one to be aware of is there's a current proposal, that's not a formal application yet, for a billboard along Wall Street just south of Riverside Hospital. It is an area that is zoned industrial, and billboards are permitted in the industrial district right now. I personally think that's a terrible location for a billboard, and everybody I've talked to about it so far agrees that it's a bad location for a billboard, so what we're gonna propose to do is amend the sign regulations to require any billboard in any zoning district to be a conditional use. So there's a process to go through, and if it makes sense, great, if it doesn't make sense, you've got some ability to, to stop it. That is the way it is now for commercial property, they would have to get a conditional use, so we're just expanding that additional review to industrial properties. There's plenty of industrial properties around town where a billboard would probably be fine and appropriate. In my mind, this is not one of them, so, we're trying to correct that.
On both sides of the street, railroad tracks?
Yeah, well, they wanted to put it on both sides of the street, but there's provisions in there that they could, they have to be separated and some other things, so they could really only do the one there. They also wanted to do one on the other side on Kennedy Drive, but that would require them to get additional use, and so they were moving ahead with the one that right now theoretically be permitted. But I haven't got a complete application yet, so I'm hoping that we can address these concerns before we get a complete application.
Somehow word got out about this, because I've been getting phone calls and phone calls from people that are very unhappy about it.
There was going to be a crowd here tonight if this was on the, but the problem is it's permitted, so there, I can't even hold the public hearing on it right now, so.
Any other business?
Just one more comment about this whole situation with the lighted signs. Were these digital lighted signs?
This was gonna be a digital bill.
Okay.
Yes.
What are we doing in regard to, you know, we're writing a new sign ordinance, and I'm assuming that we're requiring in it that they be dimmed at night and have a certain output of light. How are we working with code enforcement to police this?
Yeah, code needs to buy the appropriate kind of meter, so that we can actually measure the light levels as we've defined them in the code.
Are they aware of this?
Generally, yes, but I need to have an additional conversation.
Okay. I think that would be a very good idea.
I will also say we are working on, and it's not done yet, but a simple, like, two-page thing that summarizes the sign code, because the sign code right now is 40 pages or so, honestly. So, what we're thinking about doing is having a handout where when people come in with their business license application, we give them a copy of this, so that they can't say they didn't know the rules, at least, it may not stop them from continuing to do things they're not supposed to, but at least they'll be made aware of some of the things. So like, for example, we had a business come in the other day, and they put in those lights around the window, we've banned those now. Now, they were very nice, when we told them about it, they took them down, and it was fine, but I'd rather not even put them up to begin with, because it's expense that they have to go through and everything else, right?
Sure.
So, trying to be a little bit more proactive in the communication front.
And does the new sign ordinance still forbid having a sign for one business attached to the wall of another business?
If, if that business, if it's a wall, if it's on the same lot, they could do it, right? If it's on a different lot, they couldn't do it.
That's what I mean, if it's on a, the, the example that I'm thinking about is that building, that Matthews and Lazden building across from the case that we had tonight, where she's gonna allow-
Yeah, it's advertising that Juice Places in the mall or something, right?
They've got big banners hanging up there for a restaurant at the mall.
Yeah.
And that was illegal on our old sign ordinance, will that continue to be illegal?
It is illegal, and we need to make them take that down.
All right. It just draws attention to a building that's already pretty bad.
I noticed that tonight, too. I agree with you.
Anything else? Motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He opposed?
Roll call.